Mr. Parrish. Mrs. Staub. Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Hennig.
Here.
Mr. Haas. Mrs. Miller. Mr. Gauck.
Here.
Miss Nicky.
Okay, we're going to stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Any other changes?
Uh, there are none.
Oh, you're our new, uh...
Evan's our new board member now. I do have. So we, I received an email, you guys all received an email. It doesn't say specifically that it's for open comments, but it was addressed to, uh, for this board meeting, so. Says, uh, "Members of District 77 School Board Administration, over the course of the past year, I've had the honor of witnessing the school board in action from an in-the-wings type perspective. As a former student, a parent, and a mentor to your student board member, it has been an eye-opening experience. While I've questioned a number of decisions, I have done my best to allow my students to have their own voices, to guide them through lessons that they can only be learned through experience, and to keep my own thoughts neutral. However, as my daughter steps down from her assignment, I believe it's time to express or to address some very real concerns." FCHS website, new, uh, FCHS new website. "I intend to prepare this month's meeting with questions surrounding real numbers rather than submitting a letter. Unfortunately, a decision was made to release the proposed budget at the same time that the previous website, including the last five-plus years of budget, was replaced. While this appears to have been corrected, that was not the case on May 26th, and the mandated 30-day for review was not met. Additional concerns regarding the missing pieces of the new website include: All current and previous four policies and amendments have been removed. Agendas, meetings, and packets are partially available only for 2020. Information is not available for entirety of the 1920 school year or any time prior. Public packets are missing from February, March, and April of 2020." Culture. Much can be said about the recent unrest throughout the country and the spotlight that is shown on our country, our community. While I cannot speak on behalf of everyone affected, I think it is important that we reflect on the mission outlined for FCHS. Uh, "The mission of Freeburg Community High School in partnership with its greater communities is to enable all students to become productive and responsible citizens by providing them opportunities to maximize their intellectual, physical, and social capabilities in a safe, caring, learning environment. Do our students feel safe? Do they feel cared for? What are we doing to maximize the capabilities of students, both as a group and as individuals? Within our district, I personally witnessed bullying in the forms of student-student, student-staff, student-teacher, coach-athlete, parent-teacher, teacher-parent, the list goes on. Our community has risen up recently to shine a light into one issue of division in our community. That conversation has prompted many more to step forward, and I hope it continues. I do not aim to point fingers, rather I hope to ask that our school board, teachers, parents, and peers be listening, be watching, be aware, and be a voice for those who are afraid of the retaliation. While I know I may be criticized for saying so, the truth is this: Our community, a community where my family has lived and taught for generations, comes with many wonderful benefits, but this community also comes with its shortfalls. Among the most feared is retribution for voices, actions, and ideas that do not fit the status quo. Our students deserve better. They deserve the environment outlined within our mission statement, and I believe it is our responsibility to do a better job of providing it." School Board Direction. With the board policies currently unavailable, I struggle to reference specific sections, but I wonder if the board has its own vision and its own mission. Perhaps it is simply unfortunate, unfortunate wording in minutes, but various videos of school board meetings indicate that there are times when items are blindly accepted with little to no due diligence. For example, the minutes from January 16th read as follows. Curriculum Audit Update. Mr. Fraking has not received a report from Dr. Wood. Once a report has been received, Mr. Fraking thinks it would be appropriate for the board to accept the report. Dr. Wood is interested in working with our district, uh, to work on a professional development plan. Without having received or even seen the report, how can there be discussions, uh, suggesting that it be accepted? As a parent, I would hope that curriculum would get at least as much focus and conversation as a building addition. For the sake of time, I will leave you with this one example, but I would be happy to discuss additional instances in which similar suggestions or actions have been taken without review or consideration within the district. Why has there been a rush toward this building addition without further conversation with the community? With the many unexpected adjustments that have had to be made to complete this school year, please help me understand why this is the one, number-one priority of the board, and if I am under misunderstanding, please help me to better understand what the highest objections to the school board currently include. I hope all of you know the talent and passion you have put in place with many of the teachers and staff of FCHS. I hope that you are also able to see through an unbiased lens that there is a definitive room for improvement. To those of you who have willingly, uh, put yourselves in school board positions, thank you for stepping up. Please continue to set lofty goals for the district, and please continue to hold our staff and students accountable to those goals. Please do not forget that you were elected by us, the people of this community, to provide the best for our children, the best environment, the best curriculum, the best staff, and the best experience that they could have. We have entrusted you with quite a bit, and you are appreciated all, um, for all you put into it. Sincerely, Morgan Lee." Just let me double-check to make sure there's no one else that has. Um, I do have another, uh, email, um, from a different person, so I'll read it. Um, it says, "Good evening, and first and foremost, I'd like to address one of our staff members, Maddie Robb. She commented on Facebook that the Black Lives Matters protesters look ridiculous. Evidence of this will be attached." Um, "It disgusts me that you allow teachers like this into your school. However, knowing the racist background of Freeburg, it does not surprise me you allow students to graduate with Confederate flags being flown in their cars. That is not freedom of speech. It is hatred and racism against minority communities. You fail to properly educate students on what is truly, what it is truly like to be a minority in America. Maybe consider teaching more than whitewashed history. With that being said, do not think I am denouncing Republican and/or conservative views. That much is able to be an option when it comes to political views. However, the topic of police brutality and minorities being mistreated, uh, misunderstood is not open to opinion is a fact, uh, point-blank, period. However, hopefully something will be done. Thank you." Um, it is not signed. And I believe that is the only one, other one that I have. That was just to, that was just to me. Yes, everyone has to do a roll call.
So I'll start with you. Uh, Mr. Gauck?
Yes.
Mr. Staub?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Hennig?
He's...
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Haas?
Hi, hi.
We did not.
So as we got to a point where the number of cases of COVID might keep dropping, right? Many of them are more than three years old without getting to the back of a semi-normal way of life. Many schools are starting to have workouts, activities outside, and with the advancement in the days four, allowing them to be equipment and have regularly competitions, this is looking more and more like it. Many students are disappointed to hear that the rescheduled prom and graduation were canceled, but the fact that the community and the school have come together to find creative ways to honor our graduates this year has been noticeable. However, there were some actions by students that distracted from the main, from one of the main community events meant to honor our students. At the senior parade, there were at least three states, but these inappropriate Confederate flags as they drove through town, even with all of the unrest following the death of George Floyd, while the flag, with all of the unrest following the death of George Floyd. While the flag began as a symbol of rebellion, it has now evolved into a symbol of hate, racism, and white supremacy. While I choose to hope the students that have made this decision during the parade were still holding not the belief that the flag was simply a symbol of rebellion, I believe that they should have been able to read the room and know that this was not the time or place for this. I am not defending the actions of these students, but I would like to point out that after our first Black Lives Matter protest held in town last night, um, there were four trucks that drove the streets of, or this must have, drove the, four trucks that drove the streets of Freeburgs, sporting only one flag, the American flag. And while this action was not seen by many or covered by the media, I feel that it was a respectful way for the students to show that they were listening. However, I also feel that there should have, I also feel that we should have, shouldn't have even had to deal with this before, in the first place. These students, students should have known better. These students should have been taught better. And I, like many others, feel that there should have been the precautions for that. This was not the first time that a Confederate flag has been flown around. It just happened to be a time when more people had opened their eyes to the nature of our country, and I feel that as a point where there have been stoppages, well, on school property, sporting the flag, this school should have done something before it turned into what has now become. As someone who feels that students should have had consequences for these things, I would like to ask why those schools have not been able to catch them, noting that the parade was held on June 1st, and the seniors were not able to receive their diplomas until June 15th. As a student who has taken both AP USS grade and AP US veteran, I question why we are not taught more about these issues that have in our, have been in our past and continue to and have present. Separating myself and anyone with a white, with white skin from African-American or any people of color, I would like to understand why we no longer wish to learn from our past, and instead we wish to hide the real issues and watch as history continues to repeat itself. That being said, I would like to thank the board for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak on the behalf of the students at FCHS, and let them know that I have learned so much from sitting in this chair. I feel like you have helped to open my eyes to things that are not happening, that are, that are happening in this school. While I will not be sitting here next year, I hope that going into my senior year, I am still able to continue to use my voice to speak up for my peers, and I believe that my successor will do an amazing job. And with that, I would like to invite Evan to report on anything that I may have missed, and I would also like to congratulate him on becoming the student board member of the 2020 and 2021 school year.
Thank you, Justice. Um, I want to say that, um, looking forward, there are 49 days before school, and I know a lot of people, um, are, were, were, going back to school is something that a lot of people are looking forward to right now, that I talk to, um, especially with like everything going on in the world right now. Like, I know, I said this when I go to cross country practice, I say I would be, I'd go back to school tomorrow, and normally in the summer, that's something I say, and a lot of people agree with me. So I think, um, it'll be different when we go back to school, um, but I think it's gonna feel, uh, different as well, not with just any, um, guidelines that we have to follow. I think people will be more appreciative to be there. That's my hope at least.
That's it? Okay. Uh, Mr. Justice, thank you for your report, or does anybody have any questions or comments? There's a lot of like, thank you for being a student representative this year. The gentlemen will fill in just fine for you. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we go to the principals' report.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
You okay?
I just have a couple of things for you. Um, on the 15th and 16th, um, we had, um, over a hundred students come in to pick up their diplomas, pick up their awards. Um, I don't know if any of you have been out on the ramp, but the photo op is still out there as well, and we had a number of parents come through with their students, their families, and, um, take a lot of pictures, and yearbook was there taking pictures, or we took pictures with the yearbook camera, and it was awesome to see some students back in the building and see their faces and just, um, love it. I'm, I'm so happy to see a little bit of normalcy come back, but overall, we've had 125 people pick up the somas, um, and their awards. Photo ops are still there, some are still, um, making appointments to come in, and, um, it's, it's, again, congratulations to the seniors. It's not what we wanted for the end of the year for any of our kids, but it sure was really good seeing them. So I encourage other seniors to come in and finish picking up all their items. Um, as far as the COCA conference goes, um, yes, we are gonna definitely see some changes coming along in 2021. Wood River East, Dalton, Roxanna, Sparta, Chester, and Oakville have all had board approval to join the COCA conference. All of them look to join in 2021. Um, Roxanna is still trying to work that out, so it'll be near 21 or 22 for them. But even if they don't come in until 22, we do have enough in the large side for, um, the large side conference. So, um, Athletic Director Matt Lauer is gonna be doing a lot of planning. We're gonna do a lot of scheduling. Again, we're over a year away, but it's gonna take that time to, to get everything set up. Um, we are seeing, uh, coaches out, um, students now, less than, um, nine kids per coach. Everybody's doing social distancing, screening for symptoms. I think that's going really well. Uh, we were supposed to hopefully switch over today, but I, it sounds like things are held up a little bit on the IHSA, you know, to move to that next phase of participants. Um, but again, our, our coaches are, have been very flexible, um, being very careful, making sure that, you know, if there's any signs or symptoms of, of issues, we're trying to address things right away, and it's been so far, knock on wood, really good. And, uh, again, just really nice to see the kids back at school and the coaches and, and, um, a lot of happy kids. I can tell there's, um, they're appreciative to be back too, because I walk up to school and they're yelling and talking, "How's it going, Mr. Jung? What have you been doing?" And they just go 100 miles an hour trying to get some socialization and talking, and it, it's been a joy to see all of them. So hopefully things continue to progress. Hopefully we, we can make things, hopefully get back to a little bit more normalcy and, and be positive, and then see all these kids and, and get things back to, back together. So keep your fingers crossed. That's all I got.
All right, uh, the legislative update, there are, uh, two major things I want to point out. The first is, uh, a new law or, uh, for this year, um, makes November 3rd a mandatory, a mandatory day off for schools. Um, we had thought at first they might allow us to, uh, waive that, but that has been made clear that we are not allowed to waive that. So we'll need to amend our calendar, uh, in, uh, July. Uh, more than likely, what will happen is we will probably just put a day on at the end, uh, with our ability to do e-learning next year. Um, it, it should not be, uh, affect us. Um, also, the governor passed the budget, or while the legislation passed the budget and the governor signed it, um, it does, uh, keep, uh, school district whole. Unfortunately, it's on the back of a federal loan, and, uh, so that's never good, but, uh, at least for this year, uh, we should see the same revenue that we've seen in the past. Uh, second-floor addition plan in progress, uh, we've got a meeting scheduled next week with the architect and the, uh, CM, uh, to begin work. Uh, there was a nice article in the paper, in the BND, about, um, the grant that we applied for and the second-floor addition, so that was in your, um, board packet. Uh, summer work, the Janners have been incredibly busy, um, going through the school. Um, you know, luckily they had a little bit of a head start with the remote learning. Uh, the tile project, the tile should arrive tomorrow. Um, so all the rooms are prepped to go. Um, that should take a couple of weeks to get that in. Uh, I also want to, uh, throw a little shout out to Mr. Kanaki, who has been in and revamping that, uh, wood shop. I was in there today. Um, it's, it's gonna be a complete transformation, so it'll be very nice. Uh, IHSA rules and regulations, Ms. Jung, um, touched on this a little bit, uh, their, uh, stage one, um, the stage using phase for their, um, COVID, but IHSA using stages. Stage one was basically just exercise, and, and there was no skills allowed. Stage two, we're supposed to be able to do a little more of that. We're supposed to open it up so we can, you know, use bats and balls, um, be inside a little bit. Um, we are hoping that starts, um, I think it opens up tomorrow, but we're gonna meet next week and get everything planned. Uh, and then Mrs. Jung and I have been working with, uh, other administrators from other districts on what we need to do to set school, get school in motion. Um, the ISBE has set guidelines out that was sent out yesterday, two days ago. Um, so there are a lot of guidelines that we have to follow. Uh, so we're working on trying to figure out that the tough ones are gonna be, uh, obviously the social distancing, uh, trying to keep kids six feet apart, uh, bigger gatherings such as cafeteria, trying to figure out what we do for lunches. Um, and then, um, one of the things I, I think is going to be mandated is, uh, masks for now, um, so we'll have to work through that. And so there's a lot of things we have to work through. I did send out a letter, um, I shared a copy of that letter with you guys, um, to the, uh, that I sent it to the, um, our, our families and posted on Facebook. Um, you know, we're gonna just keep working on it, and hopefully, uh, we'll have a plan put together and ready to go, um, in plenty of time for the start of the year. Unmute yourself? Yeah, sorry. If you just take your cursor down to the bottom of your screen.
Uh, I do have a comment that, uh, for, the start of the year, great school, from my understanding, kind of, to a parent, about different proposals on, on what, a certain number of days, Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, March, uh, certain, like, their first priority, full-time, normal classes, kind of, wanting to have to be our, our, our first priority also, and to avoid at all costs, partial, partial time or split time or anything.
I, that's what I put in the letter, is that our, our goal is August 13th, that we're in-person, full day.
Right.
And, uh, we'll, we'll do what we can, uh, within the guidelines, and, um, no, but that's our goal. Uh, this is when we have a conversation about who wants to attend the triple-I conference. Um, with everything that's going on, um, my concern is what the state of Chicago is gonna be in November. Uh, the other big point is when we looked at the registration, they still have a $200 non-refundable, uh, deposit that you have to put on the hotels. So if we register and it gets canceled, the way it reads right now, we're gonna be out $200 per, per person. So, um, I'm, my recommend, recommendation is that, um, we make a decision as a board that we are going to kind of forego this year and plan on coming back next year, um, and, and going to it, and if there's anything else that we can go to, um, this is completely up to the board, but I just, I think it would be, um, I don't, I don't know if it'd be wise to spend the money and, and put that out there with the chance that we could lose that kind of a money, that kind of money.
Has there been any indication that we can virtual, that those, um, conferences?
No, the only thing that I've received is that the registration opens up. It actually opens up after our, well, I haven't, and I haven't got the program. It normally has a program in the pre-worked out. We almost always have those already. So obviously, this is a, um, hot year, so I don't have any indication.
What about the boys at, uh, place last year, a national thing, presenting, have a presentation, I think, where they scheduled to present something up there this year at the, uh, at the, at the state level?
Mr. Grabber, the FAA.
But they're not going to have any type of presentation here at the, uh, for national recognition or anything for the boys at this conference?
Uh, people that have, yeah, I thought they didn't have, they don't get the award at this conference.
Okay, I know, I understand that, but I figured any worse than usually if they have some type, the, uh, uh, not the boys getting the award, but our instructor telling about her program, a program about that. They have not invited her to do anything like that, that you know of?
I don't, no, I don't know.
My only concern, uh, invited, they would still be able to put on the program, I would guess, if invited by.
Yes, and I, I believe they did their competition virtually.
True.
So, um, I, I know they'll, their summer.
Okay.
I haven't heard of any kind of award they would receive.
Not a word.
No, we have to roll call everything.
Mr. Gauck?
Yes.
Mrs. Staub?
Hi.
Mr. Reynolds?
Hi.
Mr. Hennig?
Hi.
Mr. Haas?
Hi.
Mrs. Miller?
Hi.
Uh, this is just annual business where we, um, approve the auditor for the year. Uh, their price is, uh, the same as last year, uh, shuffle boil. Um, and so I'm recommending that we approve them and, and, uh, Gary, help me out here. Paul Ballmer, this is who we work with and, and have a long relationship, and he's done a really good job for us. All right, Paul?
Mr. Gauck?
Hi.
Mrs. Staub?
Hi.
Mr. Reynolds?
Hi.
Mr. Hennig?
Hi.
Mr. Haas?
Hi.
Mrs. Miller?
Hi.
They said they can't hear you, so maybe it might be good to let you unmute yourself. So if you just move down to the bottom, your cursor, just click on the microphone. Oh, that's right. All right, we'll just speak loud towards my computer. Uh, just, I, I put a copy of the CM agreement in the board packet, just let you know that that was, uh, signed. Um, and again, we're, we're meeting with them and the architect next week, so just wanted to update you that we did finally get everything worked out and, uh, approved. so just wanted to update you that we did finally get everything worked out and, uh, approved. Yep, I don't have great news. Um, I, um, had reached out to our representatives, um, Senator Bell, Representative Greenwood, Representative Hoffman, and received a quick response back from, uh, Representative Greenwood that they were in full support of our grant and would help out however they could. Um, Senator Bell, uh, contacted me and said that he spoke with the, uh, group that is putting the grant together, that is, that is, uh, monitoring the grant and that the grant was indeed frozen on June 1st, um, that it was a first come, first served basis. Um, unfortunately, there was no notification at all on the grant or on the website. Um, so, um, I don't think that's very good news for us to possibly get the grant. Um, but, um, we have all of our things in order if something like this pops up. I have asked if, if there's a way to get more money, uh, when I talk to them and so, I don't know. So I'm disappointed, but unfortunately it doesn't look like it's going to work out for the grant.
Any questions or comments? In the discussion, it listed, uh, it listed another alternative. Grant or funding process, is there a way to apply that?
There was, there was two different grants and only one of them applied to schools. And, um, our, our schools were eligible, but that grant was also open to municipalities as well. So, you know, some of these bigger municipalities and bigger school districts have grant writers and, you know, they pop out grants left and right and, you know. So we'll just, next time we'll jump on.
All right.
Yeah. So, uh, those who are in the board packet, um, those dates are all, uh, set up so that they're on the third Thursday, except for, uh, the ones that we needed to push back in order to meet some of the, uh, state requirements. And those are, uh, the August and September have to have 30 days in for the budget. Um, the November meeting, I'll move that back now to the third Thursday since we're not going to go to the board convention. That, that was normally that, um, um, reason why we had that early in the week. And then the June meeting, um, needs to be pushed back a week so that we have enough, uh, time between the May and the June meeting for the 30-day, presentation of the budget. So it'll be, so we'll move it to that Thursday. Okay. Okay, so it'll be corrected. So it'll be corrected to say, uh, Thursday, November 19th. Yeah. Was it, did anybody see anything else? I want to make sure I have that right when we approve it, it's those dates. And then once approved, I'll, we'll, we'll take out all the little notes in between and, and send that out so everybody can get in the calendars.
So moved.
Mr. Gauck?
Hi.
Mrs. Stab?
Hi.
Mr. Reynolds?
Hi.
Mr. Henny?
Hi.
Mr. Haas?
Hi.
Mrs. Miller?
Hi.
So we have a, um, a large storage area, which actually will end up being a stairwell to the second floor, uh, that has a lot of our records that are in paper. Um, we are not required to keep a lot of that in paper. And so one of the things I've done is I've reached out to a couple of different companies to look at digitizing it. Um, the first bid I got was 25,000, um, and they said there was about 600,000 sheets. Since then, I have not done much work as far as going through and figuring out what really needs to be digitized and kept forever and what can be, um, um, what's the right word? Discarded? Um, what did we just do the other day, Kendra? Tread, sorry, just shred those. So, um, that needs to be done, but, um, unless anybody has an objections, we need the room. I, I like to put an RFP together, uh, to see how many companies we get to bid out. Both these companies know that we, we'd have to bid it out, even though it's not over 25. Um, I still think it would be proper to bid it on. Um, and then the board would have the option to approve that bid, um, at a meeting, probably sometime in September, November, probably, September, October.
Can we get from the school board or the regional office, how many years of student record that we, I mean, like your, like your income tax, you have to keep three years?
We have policy, we have board policy, um, and then, you know, what, what, we don't have specific policies in this law. I just haven't taken note yet and figured out what in there that we need to eliminate and what we, what we need to keep and what we can eliminate.
All right.
Rules and guidelines that we have to follow. No, no, you'll have, you'll approve it when we bring back the bid, yeah. So there is a resolution that's in your packet, uh, that is to basically give our architect permission to start working on a health, life, safety amendment. There is, uh, an estimate of about a million dollars worth of that project that we could use, uh, health, life, safety money for. So those would be the HVAC, since we would, um, could be looking at replacing the HVAC on the first floor and combining it with one unit. Um, also the roofing, because we have to take the roofing out and we also, we had issues with the roofing, um, from a Trump co-report. Um, and then there's already a health, life, safety amendment for, uh, the science labs, because we have to take the science labs out anyway to get the asbestos tile out. So we could use some health, life, safety money. Um, this resolution does not commit us, commit it to, commit us to any money. All it does is give the architect permission to, uh, apply for a health, life, safety amendment. It takes five to six weeks, Mike told me, uh, is what they're going now. Um, if we move forward, then the board would have the decision if they want to sell bonds, because we don't have a million dollars in health, life, safety accounts, we'd have to sell bonds. So then I'll have to do a little more work to figure out if we sell bonds and that increases that repayment and where do we get that money from? The idea that we don't want to raise the taxes at all. But this is the first step to get the amendment going. Um, the board still has the option later on, say, you know what, I don't want to raise, I don't want to. So, um, and that's fine, you know, if, if we don't do the work, health, life, safety work, we can just go through and, um, kind of mix the paperwork, so. But in order to do any of that, we first have to, uh, pass a, an amendment and, uh, pass the resolution and, uh, have the architect begin his work.
Mr. Gauck?
Yes.
Mrs. Stab?
Hi.
Mr. Reynolds?
Hi.
Mr. Henny?
Hi.
Mr. Haas?
Hi.
Mrs. Miller?
Hi.
Uh, this was just put in, uh, in the board packet to just kind of publicly, um, mention kind of our process. When we look at curriculum, obviously, uh, our curriculum has been questioned. Um, and so what Mrs. Jung and I have done was reach out to, um, our English, our social scientists, um, to ask them what kind of things they teach as far as, has, has to do with racism and, um, and, and a lot of the topics that have been brought up. Um, so our, uh, curriculum committee meets on a monthly basis through most of the school year. Each year we review our curriculum. So our changes for our curriculum either come from internally or external. So our internal changes that we've made have been fairly substantial the last couple of years. Uh, externally, and I included a little, uh, quote in there from, uh, Dr. Carmen Ayala, uh, the state superintendent, I'd like to read that real quick. Um, "As educators, we have the responsibility and honor of nurturing young minds. Now's the time for self-examination to explore what and how we have been teaching, through our curriculum and our actions, and to commit to improving. It is not enough to simply say racism is wrong. The color of a person's skin should never define how they are treated. We must be alert to all forms of racism in our school policies and respond in ways that recognize, acknowledge, and seek to remedy the hardships and honor the true history of African-Americans." Uh, the, the purpose of reading that is to, to make whoever the public aware that we take what we teach seriously and, uh, we will continually look at what we teach and make sure that we are in line with what is proper, what the state standards are, and then also what the guidelines that are, uh, being asked of us from the state level. Um, I don't really have any action that I'm asking the board, uh, to review. Um, I think if anybody took a look at all the information that was put into the board packet, um, we, we, I think we do a very good job of, um, uh, teaching this and addressing this. And, um, I'm very proud of our teachers and what they do and, and, and the work that they've done, so. Unless anybody has any questions.
It's on the subject of the policies, correct?
Pardon me?
It's on the subject of policies, right, Greg?
No, we're on curriculum.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So we have, uh, five policies that need to be updated. Um, this, uh, came through with the work that, uh, we did with the ISB and the Press Plus. Um, all of the policies relate directly to Title IX, um, which deal with a lot of the, the issues that are going on now. Uh, these are all recommendations from Press Plus. Uh, again, this is just the first reading. Um, if there are concerns or questions, um, I can try to answer them or get the information to you between now and the final reading, which would take place at the July meeting.
So I have a question. So we're looking at what's going to be asked of us for the, the new school year. You know, face mask, six feet apart, all these other things. Should we not include those as policies during our update? And you could stipulate when dictated by the state, but that way we'd, we'd have a stronger position on the things that we're being requested to do.
Um, we, we could put that in policy. There's also, uh, a part of our manual and, and, and things that Press, uh, Plus puts out that talks about administrative procedures. So you don't have to necessarily have a policy, you can just have an administrative procedure, um, and we can implement those. Um, I, I will tell you, if you look at the guidelines from the state, they, they give the school districts quite a bit of latitude on how they want to implement some of these, um, which is frustrating on my part, because I wish they would just make it clear and that's just kind of how it has to be done, so, um, but I don't know that we really need a policy, but we can just do the same thing with what we call as administrative procedure.
Okay, I just thought it might be the right time.
Can I, can I just? And Mike, what I'll do is, um, uh, I, I'll reach out and there may be a policy that, that our lawyer would ask us to implement with some of the things that are coming up. So, um, you know, if there is a policy that, that pops up, I don't want to say there's, we won't do it, but if there is something pops up, then we can bring that up in July and do a first, first reading for that.
I don't, I don't want to be a nace there, I just, I'm concerned that you guys have enough in your tool chest to be able to handle if kids don't want to cooperate, that's all.
Mr. Gauck?
Hi.
Mrs. Stab?
Hi.
Mr. Reynolds?
Hi.
Mr. Henny?
Hi.
Mr. Haas?
Hi.
Mrs. Miller?
Hi.
So this is the process of basically the second reading of our, um, amended budget. Um, we need to go into a public hearing to allow the public to make any comments as far as, uh, the budget.
Mr. Gauck?
Hi.
Mrs. Stab?
Hi.
Mr. Reynolds?
Hi.
Mr. Henny?
Hi.
Mr. Haas?
Hi.
Mrs. Miller?
Hi.
So this is, uh, where the public has the ability to make comments if they have any. Then we need to, yes.
So moved.
Mr. Gauck?
Hi.
Mrs. Stab?
Hi.
Mr. Reynolds?
Hi.
Or Henny? Mr. Haas?
Hi.
Mrs. Miller?
Hi.
So moved.
Mr. Gauck?
Hi.
Mrs. Stab?
Hi.
Mr. Reynolds?
Hi.
Mr. Henny?
Hi.
Mr. Haas?
Hi.
Mrs. Miller?
Hi.
Uh, this would be the third year, I believe, we would be with OPA. Um, they are, there is a 3.1% increase over last year. Um, despite that, we are still anticipating, um, that we will more than break even. Again, board members, uh, if you recall, uh, before we went to OPA, we were losing money, um, hand over fist. And, uh, so OPA's been very good. Uh, in fact, I received an email, um, today where they reached out and expressed their desire to help in any way they can, uh, for this upcoming school year. Um, so, um, I'd like the, the board, recommend the board approve one more year with OPA.
Mr. Gauck?
Hi.
Mrs. Stab? Mr. Reynolds?
Hi.
Or Henny? Mr. Haas? Mrs. Miller?
Hi.
Uh, this is annual business. Uh, the board permits Diane to make the payment she needs to make, uh, without, uh, specific board approvals to make sure that she can get these things done within the fiscal year.
Second.
Mr. Gauck?
Hi.
Mrs. Stab? Mr. Reynolds?
Hi.
We need to go into a public hearing to allow the public to make any comments as far as the budget.
Mr. Gauk.
Aye.
Mrs. Stab.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Hennig.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
So this is the process of basically the second reading of our amended budget. We need to go into a public hearing to allow the public to make any comments as far as the budget.
Mr. Gauk.
Aye.
Mrs. Stab.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Hennig.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
So this is the process of basically the second reading of our amended budget. We need to go into a public hearing to allow the public to make any comments as far as the budget.
Mr. Gauk.
Aye.
Mrs. Stab.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Hennig.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
So moved. Mr. Gauk.
Aye.
Mrs. Stab.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Hennig.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
So moved.
Mr. Gauk.
Aye.
Mrs. Stab.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Hennig.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
So this would be the third year, I believe, we would be with OPA. They are, there is a 3.1% increase over last year. Despite that, we are still anticipating that we will more than break even. Again, board members, if you recall, before we went to OPA, we were losing money hand over fist, and so OPA's been very good. In fact, I received an email today where they reached out and expressed their desire to help in any way they can for this upcoming school year. So I'd like the board, recommend the board approve one more year with OPA.
Mr. Gauk.
Aye.
Mrs. Stab.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Hennig.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
So this is annual business. The board permits Diane to make the payment she needs to make without specific board approvals to make sure that she can get these things done within the fiscal year.
Second.
Mr. Gauk.
Aye.
Mrs. Stab.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Hennig.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
So this is the process of basically the second reading of our amended budget. We need to go into a public hearing to allow the public to make any comments as far as the budget.
Mr. Gauk.
Aye.
Mrs. Stab.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Hennig.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
So this is the process of basically the second reading of our amended budget. We need to go into a public hearing to allow the public to make any comments as far as the budget.
Mr. Gauk.
Aye.
Mrs. Stab.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Hennig.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
So this is the process of basically the second reading of our amended budget. We need to go into a public hearing to allow the public to make any comments as far as the budget.
Mr. Gauk.
Aye.
Mrs. Stab.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Hennig.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
So this is the process of basically the second reading of our amended budget. We need to go into a public hearing to allow the public to make any comments as far as the budget.
Mr. Gauk.
Aye.
Mrs. Stab.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Hennig.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
So this is the process of basically the second reading of our amended budget. We need to move to accept the resignation of Mr. Ben Howes as head golf coach effective immediately. Move by Mrs. Stab, second by Mr. Hennig. Do you call the roll, please, Kendra?